Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Here.
Kane. Poyer. Finnegan. Snow. Taylor. Gallagher. Olson.
Here.
At this time, I entertain a motion to move into closed session for the purposes of collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules but for one or more classes of employees.
Second.
Roll call please.
Taylor.
Here.
Gallivan.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Poyer.
Yes.
Kane. Yes. Motion is approved and we'll move into closed session. All votes closed.
Okay, we're back in open session. Roll call please.
Kane.
Here.
Stout.
Here.
Finnegan.
Here.
Poyer.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Gallivan.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Okay, moving on to item seven, petitions and hearings. It's a practice of the board to provide a place on the agenda for and welcome comments and suggestions from the public. Do we have any cards this evening?
Good evening. At this time, we do not have any public comments.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move along to the educational focus and we have the instructional showcase. We'll turn it over to Yvonne.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Colonel Michael Reardon from Willowbrook High School and Master Sergeant William Jones. They are JROTC instructors at each building and they're going to share with us their successes with the ROTC program last year and this year.
Okay. So, good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for allowing us to come and speak to you. Been a really exciting 12-plus months that we've had since we began the process of bringing JROTC on. I just want to give you the highlights and successes that we've had as we began the process and that led up to where we are today. So, the successes for Willowbrook, I'm going to show you some of the things that I feel are the most important. The main things I want to mention is that by the end of last year, we had thirty cadets enrolled.
They're going to turn you on because they're taping it and they need that on to be able to tape it. Brett is on. The Brett is on.
Thank you. So, I have a lot of technology that I work with back there, but I don't have this particular system. So, we ended the year with about thirty cadets that were enrolled. So, considering that we started with just a handful of kids that were coming to see us during lunch breaks, we made quite a bit of progress. The cadets that returned are in the two-level classes. They're highly enthusiastic and very engaged in the program, both during class and during many other activities. There's a very strong willingness by the cadets to involve JROTC in more school-wide activities. So, we're trying to get as many things that we can do, like doing the color guards at the football games and doing things at assemblies, doing the homecoming parade. And I'm very happy to see how the students that were with me last semester have really come a long way and are providing the leadership roles that we need in the program right now. They're proactively and engaged with every aspect of the establishment of the program, so I'm going to go into that in more detail, how that actually happened. But again, I'm very proud of them with that. Lots of students volunteered during lunch periods, free periods, every day of last semester, of the first semester of the last school year, helping us establish a program so we were able to get our classes up and running the first day of second semester. An impressive number of JROTC cadets have sought out additional leadership opportunities as cadet battalion staff officers, cadet sergeants, and cadet JROTC summer camp participants. So, I'll be telling a little bit more about that as well. The first thing we did last year was JLAB. JLAB is a program that stands for JROTC Leadership and Academic Bowl. It was fall of 2024. It's the first official event that we did as a JROTC unit, and it's a competition that takes place annually. So, we're preparing to do it again this year. It begins with online practice exams, and then it's a three-level competition that takes place. The final competition takes place in Washington, DC. It challenges cadets in leadership, academics, and it was all this teamwork. And what happens is that groups of cadets, usually about five cadets at a time, are put into online exams that they take together, and it's a competition. So, last year, we did make it to level one, but considering that all the cadets that took this, were not even really enrolled in the program yet, I was very proud of them coming together, volunteering, and doing this on their own time. That's the award that they get for participation in JLAB that's in the upper corner. Another big thing we did the first semester of last year before we had students officially enroll was we did a Cantigny Veterans Day field trip. So, we coordinated that with the history department as well. There was about ninety cadet students and teachers that attended this. Seventy of the people that went were students from the history department. That's an approximate number. I'm not quite sure exactly how many. But they had a pretty much full day at Cantigny where they were able to learn about the military history that's taken place since World War I. They did an experience where they learned about the technology behind tanks, the use of tanks and manufacturing of tanks, so it incorporated a lot of aspects of like the engineering behind tanks as well. And they also did a simulated D-Day experience that was a full-length replica of the beach at Normandy with interactive equipment that the museum provided, where they would go through and answer historical questions as they went up the actual embankment that was modeled after Normandy. So, they had a pretty good time that day. There's just a few pictures of some of the things that they did. One thing physically was done by the cadets that I was really proud of is the supply room. So, this was basically an empty storage room. The school was very kind to give us. Gradually throughout the year, we had gotten in several shipments of equipment, all of our uniforms, all the equipment that we use if we're going to be doing anything that involves training specifically, if we were going to do like things in a field environment or if we were going to use electronic devices, all of our archery equipment. Basically, the students built this room. So, all the cadets that I have, they put the racks together. They spent a lot of time, again voluntarily, helping me put this together, and now cadets actually manage this. I have two cadets that are very proud to keep that looking as good as it is. That's kind of their office, their room, their place, right? I'm actually responsible for it, but they manage that for me. I'm very proud of what they do with that. Other things that happened is that we have 100% of the cadets have been issued their uniforms. All required technology has been provided by the Army as well as by Willowbrook when needed. The equipment to conduct archery training and start a competitive archery team is in use. All the cadets have been trained on using the archery equipment per the requirements of a program called NASP. I'll explain that a little bit more in a second. We have all of our banners and additional equipment, flags needed to do color guard, parade activities as well. We also have all this equipment that we need to send students to our summer camp, which is the JROTC Cadet Leadership Challenge Summer Camp that I'll show you a few pictures from that we actually sent cadets to at the end of the year. Archery is a very big activity with the kids. They really enjoy this. We've been provided an archery range area that's sort of a multipurpose area in Willowbrook in Room C2 where we have an archery curtain. You can see it a little bit in the bottom left-hand picture. That's a similar group of, that's a similar situation where a group of cadets are using that equipment. But all the cadets, as I said, have been trained to the national standard, as have I, under the National Archery in a School Program. It's a very popular activity. We try to do it about twice a month. We really want to get to the point where we can put a competitive team together, where we compete against other schools. I would really, really enjoy showing up at an archery competition with some of the other schools I worked with at CPS and say, yes, we're here and we represent, okay? It would be great. The competitions are a lot of fun for the kids, too. So, it's a chance, if you're not a varsity athlete or if you are a varsity athlete, to represent your school. And actually, it involves trophies and medals and things like that. So, we did the Lilac Fest Parade, which is one of the bigger events that we did. Those are all the cadets that were there. Lombard was very friendly with us when we approached him about being in a parade. We were all very excited to do it. This was the first time the kids were able to do something like this. So, they marched the full, I believe, three miles, keeping its step the entire way. Very proud of them. I think this did a lot to encourage people to want to be in the program and stay in the program. Color guard was a big thing that we wanted to stand up after, especially after doing a parade. So, we've been able to set up a functioning color guard. Over fourteen of our cadets have been fully trained to be able to do that. We've presented at the home football games this year, and we're going to continue to do that. With the impression that we will be able to continue to do that, I need to approach Dr. Kraus about doing it further, like at basketball games and things like that and school assemblies. But everybody's incredibly eager to continue to do this. It's building a lot of pride in the cadets that are taking part. This also should be eventually something that will become modeled in a club-type format. I would like to get this to a point where it has regular meetings, where it's set up just like a school club. It would be something that would be for JROTC cadets. It wouldn't be open to the entire school possibly, but it would be something that would be set up like a club within our program where they would regularly be doing. And our goal, too, with this is to have it become more and more student-managed. That's a big thing about our program. And with a group of cadets that we have that are second-year cadets now, I see that as being a real feasible thing to have happen. So, JCLC is a JROTC Cadet Leadership Challenge. It was a summer camp that we took several cadets from both schools this year. And when we were there, I had originally six cadets scheduled. One became ill, so decided to stay home. I had five that went. They had incredible time. I have never worked with or taken students to one of these and not had them come back and enthusiastically be talking about, you would think they were at the greatest summer camp of their life, even though they're living in an army barracks and getting up at five in the morning and having a clean latrine and make their bed and have guidance from good people like Sergeant Jones and myself, which is, you know, sometimes direct. It's something that's very, very well done that these cadets really enjoy. That's the graduation ceremony. It's in the upper corner. And you'll see there where they built a boat. That's a big process that they do. They have to actually use creativity, engineering. Anybody that's had a STEM course is very valuable then. The boats don't always look that good, okay? You would not necessarily want to go floating off of a desert isle on them. That one I would, but they're not always that great. So, they do things that are there, like physical training, army physical training, land navigation with a compass and a map, obstacle courses, the water survival, rappelling. There's also a leaders' reaction course, which was something that I personally ran at the camp, which is the event down in the bottom left-hand corner, which is a lot of team games that you might see if you were going to try and, you know, have a department at work that you might see where you have eight people with a rope and you have to move a ball, and you have to collectively come up with these simple things that are very important to build team cohesion. So, they spent about, every cadet spent about four hours in that particular program. Most of these other things that were going on were throughout every day, and then they also ended every day with sports competitions. So, the best way to keep everybody doing what they're supposed to is to keep them busy the entire time, and they were all eagerly jumping into it. You can see here the sports competitions that were going on. People were really, really involved with that. They really enjoyed it. There's a few more people building a boats. Even when there was heavy rain, you'll see they're wearing rain suits in the bottom picture right there, and they're still smiling. So, even though I've been doing this for years, in this capacity, I can't get my own children to sit in the rain in a rain suit and smile, so I'm pretty proud of that. But it was a great success. Everybody's eager to go again if they can, and they're currently telling everybody about it, so I think I'll have a full list for next year. We ended the year with an award ceremony. So, we gave 147 awards to thirteen, across thirteen categories, to thirty cadets. Those are all the awards that we presented. They included areas like academic achievement, strong GPAs, leadership. We give an award if somebody was in a varsity sport as well, so one of those ribbons is for that. So, we encourage participation outside of the program and actually award the students for that that are in JROTC. They get an award for the Academic Leadership Bowl and outstanding conduct as well. So, these are the cadets, just a few of them, that actually were awarded. The top award is an academic achievement wreath, so that's for giving extremely high GPA. That's one of the highest awards that we have. This year, there'll be additional awards that we'll be giving out because we have a full year. None of this would have been possible without District 88 taking the time to bring this program aboard, and I'm very thankful for that. Also, Dr. Kraus doing all the work he has assisting us at our school and everybody that's on staff there that's decided to support our program made this possible as well. Does anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask me about what we've done over the last year, in particular, the last semester? Yes?
I have two questions. So, I know it's new. So, I don't know if it's a change as time goes on, but...
So, you said you've got second-year cadets? Am I using the proper terminology there?
Yes. So, when we decided to begin the program, we decided that if I felt that the cadets were ready to advance into the second-year curriculum, that I could do that. And that's one thing that I discussed with my brigade headquarters, which manages the program outside of, so they manage the programs outside of the school district level. So, that's what we did. We were able to do that based on what each, all the students in that group of cadets was able to achieve and accomplish. So, right now, we've accelerated some of the things that would normally be happening if you had a four-year program. Normally, it works where your fourth-year cadets are your officers, so people that have ranks that sort of, they definitely, they mimic the army rank structure. So, the highest ranking person there is a cadet that has the same rank as me, a lieutenant colonel. We've actually taken those kids that were there last year, put those into those roles, put them into those roles now. So, they're actually planning things and doing things as if, you would see a lot of people that would be seniors or fourth-year cadets, they're beginning that. And we're lucky that we have a number of upperclassmen that are juniors and seniors that are in those roles that have maturity to do that. For instance, they're planning a staff meeting on Wednesday, which again is the kind of thing that would be seen by somebody who's normally a fourth-year student or senior or junior, presented with an agenda already for the meeting, presented with, you know, this is what we're going to do, laying out roles. And so, I'm very proud to see them like jumping right into this. And I'm also blessed to have a lot of students that are involved in a lot of organizations in the school. So, it's good to see that we're developing new skills and we're also using things that we've already learned before they even had an ROTC program to be part of.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Do you need a USA Archery instructor?
Pardon me?
Do you need a USA Archery instructor?
So, are you a USA Archery instructor?
I am.
So, are you familiar with the NASP program?
Yes, I'm learning about it and other scouting.
Yeah, I, right now, I will say this. I'm not the kind of person that says this, but help would be welcome in certain things. We do archery. We try to do it in class right now, at least twice a month. So, if anybody would like to, you know, see how it's done or come and see that, if you want to let me know that you're coming, that'd be great. You mean, even if you wanted to shoot, I can bring faculty in, and I think everybody here would qualify under that umbrella, okay? Just as long as you follow the safety rules. That's the one thing that makes this the sport that it is. And I think that that's one thing that brings the kids together, too, is following the safety rules and having a common goal of doing something that they can all achieve or all do and do well. And the safety portion of it, they know, is it's just as big as getting a good score when they actually shoot, so. Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you for letting me come and speak to you. I'm going to let Sergeant Jones use my computer. If you want to, just give me a second to set him up. use my computer. If you want to, just give me a second to set him up.
Okay. Good afternoon and good evening. Thanks for inviting me out as well. It's always a great opportunity to let you all know what we're doing over at Addison Trail. This is my fifth and last school I'll teach at, and I'm having a good time there, and the kids are motivated, and it's all that it can be. So I shared your successes. When I left today, we had 61 cadets, which is a good number. We finished last year at 47. My cadet breakdown is about 18 seniors. The seniors want to be involved in the military, and they come across, have about 13 freshmen. That's my embarrassment point right now, but we're going to fix that. Got a plan for it. All right, so I added some pictures. Some of the things that the colonel was telling you, because we did it all together, I'm going to try to tell you different things that we do at Addison Trail. So you know we had the robotic camp. You all gave me a grant to buy more robots. The Army sent me even more robots. In September, I get a whole bunch of robots. So the challenge in that particular program is getting all the right people to be available. I had 14 to go through the camp. All these guys are brainiacs. I had practice this past Saturday. Had four to show up. I didn't realize they had another, a parade to go to. A lot of the kids went to a parade. But my goal is to stand this program up and for us to get good enough, if not, to compete in this year's competition in May next year. Normally, it takes about a year and a half to get good. Okay, to the far right, upper right, that's one of the pitches we took during the robotic camp. Principal Stan Andrews came down and actually drove one of the robots and impressed some of the kids because he's a gamer. So it kind of worked out fine with that. And just other pitches from the summer camp. Okay, my agenda, I'm going to introduce my battalion commander to you, tell you who my staff officers are, talk about our successes and areas of growth, and then try to summarize the whole thing for you. Okay, this is my battalion commander. What makes this young lady so unique? She's a senior, of course. She has class second period. She has lunch fifth period. She eats lunch inside of the classroom, watching over the cadets. She gets out of school at seventh period. She comes back from her eighth-period class, went to my biggest class, and she gets involved. So she's in the fight. She runs the battalion. Everybody knows her and hopefully she'll get an ROTC scholarship. I mean, she's really into it. She plans military, and she's the best battalion commander I've seen in my 19th year of doing it, so. You can see the rest of the staff officers. I like to pat these guys on the back. Two of these guys have 4.3 GPAs. So they're blessed with a lot of smart kids, and that's a big deal. I'd also like to say that two of these staff members, the same ones with the 4.3 GPA, are starters on the football team, both seniors. That's a rarity. Okay, this, all right, let me show our parade. Switch up here for a second, if I have volume or not. But this is our first parade we marched in, the Memorial Day Parade. I think we marched probably 21 people that particular day, calling cadences, and the kids were glad to be there. It looked like we were in stuff at that particular time, so. Had a good time. Had a really good time. I'm very proud of them, though they're scared to death to be out there. Okay, some of our events, I don't know if you can see that. I'll try to summarize it for you. Color Guards, we did AT, our graduation, AT Awards Day for the seniors, Memorial Day Parade, Indian Trail, we did both of their graduations. We also had a Blazer Battalion Awards Day. We did it on the football field, kind of twisting the colonel. We gave awards out, and it was an awesome day. We invited those people who thought they may come to JROTC the next year. We had a total of 75 people attended, so it was a major success. And we funded on a budget of $350. We met the National Guard, made awards for us, too, so it was awesome. June, of course, went to the same camp. Colonel went to, six attended and graduated, finished the program. Robotic camp was successful, 14 people there. Okay. Okay, the first team meeting was 9/September. We had this weekend. Like I said, only four showed up. Still have plans for that. Most of those kids are super busy. They're, I think all of them have over 4.0 GPAs, and they're in every sport and everything you can do. So I'm trying to find the time, and we think it's probably going to be one or two Saturdays a month that we meet for three or four hours. August, we had a JROTC Leadership Camp for my staff. A lot of them were out of country, four attended. And I'm proud to say that the battalion runs Addison Trail High School JROTC program. They run it. I give the battalion commander advice, and she has to go get it, she gets it done. We participated in the second parade, the Addison Community Parade. You all probably saw us marching through here. That was really good. We had 23 cadets, a lot of the same people. Then we had about three or four more freshmen in that parade, and it was ultimate success. The parents saw it, and they were wowed by seeing their babies look so professional. Okay, September, here now, robotics team's kicking off. Drill team is still a struggle. Drill is one of the hardest things to teach. It's one of the hardest programs to build because it's like being a basketball player. There's only five out there on one team, and everybody sees you. Drill is kind of the same way. It's hard to make everybody good unless we all practice together. And right now, drill is not their number-one sport, so I'm fighting with other things right now. But my goal is to get that started. Color Guard, we're doing exceptionally well. Have one color guard. We're starting a second color guard, so one of my color guards can cover Addison Trail during Veterans Day, and others can go to Indian Trail, hopefully, and do color guards there. But we're doing well with that. The J-Lab the colonel was talking about, we did not participate last year because I'd just gotten here. You know, in September, we weren't anywhere close to that, and I didn't have the bright minds that I have now academically. Now, I have 11 students that have over 4.0 GPAs. One just made a 25 on ACT. So they're excited about it. They want to get in there, and I look for us to do well at that. Okay, also, we're starting a Raiders Club. This is equivalent to the Army Rangers. So we only have, we had one home football game because I wasn't at that one. We have one on the 26th, I think, or 27th, the last year prior to this month. So we're going to have a crew of 10 cadets in the camouflage uniform. Every time Addison Trail scores, and hopefully we'll score a lot, they have them in a circular formation. They'll do 10 push-ups, and they'll get up and do some kind of chant. So our goal with that is to impress the babies sitting and standing, the fifth, sixth, seventh grader. Wow, recruiting, all about recruiting. So hopefully, that'll go off well. The kids are excited about wearing the uniforms, and I'm excited for them. Okay. To summarize, the Blazer Battalion is projecting a year field with building community relationships, building a strong relationship with Indian Trail Junior High School. And I'd like to pause to say, last year, I only conducted one visit at that school. Indian Trail is my bread and butter. If I can't get in that school and do what we need to do, I only get 13 freshmen, which is what I have right now. I'm trying to help, get my principal to help me get in there. I'd like to be there three times before December. If I can get there three times, I get at least 50 people out of this school. Right now, they just don't know us. I have the valedictorian from Indian Trail's graduation is in my ROTC class. She loves it. She's doing well. So I would like for us to make the school proud, the district, battalion. And the grand goal is to motivate cadets to be better citizens, have fun, and grow the program. Okay? Colin Powell kind of summed up what I feel. I see my job is to get kids involved in the community, learn how to do what's right, think the decisions through, and make intelligent decisions that may affect them or anyone around them. So I push that very hard. I push my kids hard. And I'm proud to say that my battalion staff, I wouldn't trade them for anybody I've had. Let's start with the battalion commander. That concludes my presentation. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I want to thank both of you. Very impressive what you've been able to do in just one year. We hit some people from the Lilac Parade, thanking Willowbrook JROTC for being at the Lombard, and heard great things about having the Addison JROTC out. So thank you for everything that you're doing and getting out there and getting kids involved. It's just really impressive.
If I might be able to add, a lot of the success we've had was, I know I have to give him credit for helping me, and I hope he gives me credit. I would hope you'd give me some credit.
Oh, no, no. We pull together on a lot of things. There's no, we could have made it otherwise.
So the expertise that you normally have is you have, you know, you usually have a colonel, you usually have a sergeant. And so when we can, we pool our resources and our expertise. So I want to make sure that I give him credit for that, you know, just, you know, it's very good to have in the district two programs where we can both rely on each other and, you know, share resources, so.
And right now, we're beating our heads and doing everything legally possible to build these numbers. And I'm serious about that. My background's recruiting, and I'm afraid if I can't get what I need to get, because I, you know, that's what I do. But thanks for the time and the invitation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you can back out that way. Thanks. Okay. Next. Move along to item nine. At the time, I entertain a motion to establish a consent agenda. These are items that have been discussed previously or are routine items, and... Okay. Any questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Sir.
Roll call, please.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Next, we move on to item 11, discussion items. First one is A, electricity service procurement.
All right. It's the time of year, really the time of the, you know, season to start looking at electricity pricing. So our annual electricity usage is approximately 11 million kilowatts, with an annual budget of approximately $1.3 million, or about 16% of the O&M budget. Therefore, we are actively working to control this expense by a combination of energy reduction efforts, lighting replacements to be more efficient, like we did at our district office, lower use fixtures and demand response program, managing the peak usage levels with monitoring equipment and control of electricity rate that we pay. We have been actively monitoring the energy market and have been in conversation with Scott Pellock, our energy consultant through Entel Energy, which has resulted in a strategy to approach this volatile energy market. We will be seeking an index rate pricing that will allow us to secure some pricing with a designated vendor for a short term while we monitor the market with set pricing triggers. If and when the pricing triggers are reached, we would then consider if that is the right time to lock in electricity. We've typically done it in a couple of different blocks, so that way, if the rates go down, we don't lock ourselves in with a higher rate. We have a little more flexibility to maneuver the market. Obviously, the goal is securing the most competitive rates and maintaining stability of our electricity cost over the next few years. In accordance with the standing authorization by the Board of Ed, we will solicit competitive electricity supply contract rates due to the need of the same-day response to pricing for the purchase of electricity. If rates are favorable, we will lock in the contract on that day. We will subsequently bring this agreement to the Board of Ed at the next meeting for retroactive approval. Since we purchase our own electricity supply, our monthly cost for electricity is based on a two-part rate. Part one is for the actual electricity or the energy rate, and part two is a combination of up to six different sub-rates. That could be for transmission, capacity, line distribution, renewal compliance, charges, et cetera. The energy rate component typically represents approximately 60% of the total electricity charge. The challenge in recent years has been in the sub-rate increases approved by the PGM for electricity, or the Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Maryland interconnection conglomerate that kind of manages the electrical grid as well as the market for electricity. The capacity sub-rate charge is expected to increase significantly from June 2025 through May 2026. It is estimated to remain high for the next two to three years. We are trying to reduce these capacity charges with the demand response program that began this year with CPower. That agreement goes through March 2028, and that's where if we, every year during a specific time, they call us, they say, drop all of your energy, and we try to hit benchmarks. This year, we hit our benchmarks, so we're waiting to see what kind of calculation we get in terms of how much money we'll get back. So just being a part of that program and shedding our electricity to kind of take a little bit of the ease off of the demand results in cash for the district. In addition, we are told that there will be a COMED carbon offset charge, which will be a credit through April. And we are currently viewing and just recently heard about community solar projects, where we wouldn't necessarily put solar on any of our rooftops or in our land, but contracts were given to solar farms that they're having a hard time offloading and finding people to sell their electricity savings that we might be able to tap into in terms of, you know, a no-cost-to-us way to get back some more rebates. But still, really early on in that stage, wanting to look and learn a little bit more about that program before we jump too far in.
That carbon offset, explain that a little bit?
I don't know too much about it. All I know is it's going to be a credit, similar to the carbon tax credit we got two years ago. It seems to offset the capacity charge that we get. So with the high capacity, this COMED is going to help, you know, level it out a little bit, not to the point where it's going to be offsetting by any means, just kind of taking a little bit of the bite out of that steep increase.
I entertain a motion. I'm sorry, that's just discussion. Sorry, I'm so used to, like, having to do action.
We're so quickly done with it.
Yeah. No reaction tonight. So then we have the information discussion items, no discussion items, the freedom of information, and move on to school recognition.
Hi, good evening. On behalf of Principals Jack Andrews and Dr. Daniel Kraus, just want to share some information from the schools. So I'll start with Addison Trail High School. And they would just like to share that they hosted their annual open house last week on September 4th, and nearly 200 families were represented in attendance. And they'd like to thank all the families who were able to join, and information about parent-teacher conferences will be shared soon. Tomorrow, September 9th, Addison Trail will kick off their Padres Latinos and Exión meetings. The meeting will begin at 6:00 PM, and the topic will focus on navigating Addison Trail. On Wednesday, Addison Trail will host its first Citizens Advisory Council meeting for the school year, starting at 7:00 PM, and they will be joined by District 88 Superintendent Dr. Jean Barbanente and Chief Financial Officer Ryan Damaraki. Addison Trail also looks forward to hosting the Addison Classic Community Softball Game on September 13th, and games will kick off at 10:00 AM, and there will be a DJ, food trucks, and more. Addison Trail's annual Go Pink volleyball game will take place starting at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, September 16th, and the event will feature raffles, recognition for survivors and healthcare workers, and more. Financial aid night is coming up next week on Wednesday, September 17th, and that meeting will take place virtually via Zoom. And information is on the school's website for how to join that meeting. And Addison Trail would just like to thank everyone for supporting all of their events. From Willowbrook, Dr. Daniel Kraus and his team would like to share some exciting news. They were recently featured on ABC 7 Chicago's Friday Flyover Event on September 5th. So for more information about that event and to view the video segments, you can go to our website at dopage88.net/wbonaBC7. Willowbrook also hosted their annual open house on September 4th, and it was a great opportunity for information to be shared with parents and guardians regarding the curriculum and course expectations. Open House started at 6:30 PM in the auditorium with a welcome meeting, followed by an abbreviated version of the daily schedule beginning at 7:00 PM. From the Counseling Department, they continue to register new students and families, assist returning students and families with re-enrolling in their courses, and completing the registration process. Since the beginning of the school year, Willowbrook has had 50 new families enroll at the school. A total of 88 families attended the Senior Family Application Process Presentation Night on August 28th, in person and via Zoom. That presentation was similar to what was presented to all of the senior students during their English classes. We will prioritize the application process, financial aid, scholarships, and school links. Every Tuesday through November 11th, the Counseling Department will host college applicant... Every Tuesday through November 11th, the counseling department will host college application assistance during Warrior Time in C5 or the Student Success Center. In athletics, Willowbrook would like to share that September is Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month, and Willowbrook Athletics is proud to partner with Cal's Angels to help turn September gold. This month, they are joining the fight against pediatric cancer to honor the courageous children facing this battle, raise awareness, and support vital research. You can make an impact by donating to Cal's Angels and learning more about how to spread awareness in our community. Gold T-shirts are being sold for $10 each, and they'll be available next week during all lunch periods in the bookstore. And they'd like to share that there are Gold Game Events coming up this week. On Tuesday, September 9th, the Boys Soccer versus Downers Grove South. On Tuesday, September 9th, the Girls Tennis versus Lyden Game. And Thursday, September 11th, the Girls Volleyball versus St. Charles East Game. And on Friday, September 12th, the Football versus Lyden Game. They will all be Gold Games in honor of Cal's Angels. And the Special Olympics volleyball, Willowbrook would like to wish best of luck to the volleyball team as they host their fourth match of the season at 4:00 PM tomorrow, September 9th, in the main gym. For girls golf, congratulations to the girls golf program for their victories over Addison Trail on September 3rd. JV won 201 to 237, and Varsity won 210 to 214. It's the first Varsity win of the season and the second victory for JV. Our next match will be tomorrow against Hinsdale South. In boys golf, congratulations to the Varsity Boys Golf Team for their third-place finish at this past Saturday's John Hammond Invitational. In addition, congratulations to the Warriors for their 143 to 185 victory over Morton on September 3rd. The victory brings the Warriors' conference record to 3-0. Their next meet is a duel against Addison Trail on September 13th at Prairie Bluff. With girls tennis, congratulations to the girls tennis team on their second-place finish as they hosted their annual Under the Lights Tennis Quad on September 5th. Best of luck to the team as they go gold tomorrow against Lyden. For girls swimming, best of luck to the Varsity Girls Swim Team as they travel to York High School tomorrow, September 9th, for a triangular meet. In girls volleyball, congratulations to the team on their second-place finish this past weekend at their annual Eight Team Invitational. With girls cross country, congratulations to the team on their outstanding performance at the Mike Currahick Invitational at Lyons Township this past Saturday, September 6th, including a first-place finish by the freshman team. In boys cross country, congratulations, congratulations to the Varsity Boys Cross Country Team on their outstanding performance at the Mike Currahick Invitational at Lyons Township on September 6th. With cheerleading, congratulations to the cheer team on their outstanding performance at the first home football game on Friday, September 5th versus Oswego East. On that night, Willowbrook celebrated senior night for the following Warriors. Aleah Ramirez, Avery Fitzgerald, Lily Convoy, and Miley Benson. Congratulations as well to the dance team on their outstanding performance during the home football game on September 5th versus Oswego East. On that night, Willowbrook celebrated senior night for the following Warriors. Ava Jovanovic, Cecilia Odo, Javina Mikovavich, Kaia Capulong, and Madeline McKellen. With girls flag football, congratulations to the Warriors for defeating York 47 to 0 on September 3rd in a West Suburban Conference crossover matchup. And congratulations to the team for winning the Bradley Bourbon A Tournament this past Saturday, September 6th. In tackle football, best of luck to the team as they host Lyden for a West suburban conference opening matchup on Friday, September 12th at Willowbrook's John Fisher Field. Kickoff will start at 7:30 PM. In boys soccer, best of luck to the Varsity Soccer Team as they compete tomorrow against DGS in the Cal's Angels Go Gold Game. And to wrap up, just some important dates they'd like to share. On September 10th is the CAC meeting at 7:00 PM. Homecoming Week will take place from September 22nd to 27th, and that includes the Athletic Hall of Fame Induction Dinner on September 25th, which will start at 6:00 PM at the Carlisle and Lombard. On September 26th is the Homecoming Assembly and Parade, and then the dance will take place on September 27th. Thank you.
Too bad there's not anything going on.
Especially in life.
Oh, my goodness. It's like exhausting just listening to all of it. Okay. Then Board Member reports. Okay. Well, obviously, we have September 20th, the gathering at Divine, and at Divine, and hopefully, everyone, if they haven't bought tickets, will buy tickets. It's all on the website, so. And then on Thursday, for the Finance Committee, just wanted to open up to any of the Board Members if you want to attend. I know we have a lot going on, coming up, so as a reminder, like with any committee, you're welcome to attend. Obviously, we do the committees, so we don't all have to attend, but you're obviously welcome if you'd like to come, so. Turn it over to you, Jean.
I...
No Superintendent report? Okay. Then, public comments again. Do we have any comments from the public?
Good evening. At this time, we do not have any public comments.
Okay. Then we'll move on to announcements. The next Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, September 22nd, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the District Boardroom located at the District Administrative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois, 60101. And then following, Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, October 6th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the District Boardroom located at the District Administrative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois, 60101. Next, I entertain a motion to move into closed sessions for purposes of A, the appointment and employment compensation discipline performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on, on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine validity, however, meaning to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the total, to the local government wage increase. Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with the Act, and be collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, and C, security procedures, school building, safety and security, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an adult, a, to an actual threatened or reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, or public, or public property.
Sergeant.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved, and we'll move into closed session.
...